I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for consent and approval today, we have eighty-six exonerations for one hundred and four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-three cents. That's our tax years two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Would you share your orders for August fourteenth, two thousand thirteen? Minutes of May twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen. Purchase orders and pay vouchers, general county fund expenditures, eighty thousand three nineteen sixty-four. Full severance fund, two thousand six oh four sixty-four. Chestnut Ridge Park, four thousand five seventy-six oh seven. Nine one one, eleven thousand three twenty-seven ninety-one. Assessors valuation fund, one thousand seven nineteen sixty-two. Home confinement fund, eleven thousand three oh seven eighteen. For total of one hundred eleven thousand eight fifty-five oh six. And I have one revision for Camp Muffley. This is, um... Um, it's redistributing the funds within the account for salary and fringe benefits for the new director at Mason Dixon Park. I said Camp Muffley, didn't I? I mean Mason Dixon.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Thank you, and Renetta.
Renetta is not here, so I'm going to give you what you need.
Okay. You're playing double duty.
Hey, this is a contract with the West Virginia Development Office for two thousand dollars, and this is for the same amount of buildings to purchase equipment. There's a motion that needs to be enacted to the Montague County Commission that on Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, the former president has to call for resolution. Be resolved if the Montague County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Ellen Callen, President of the Commission, to act on his behalf by signing the contract with the West Virginia Development Office, in order to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the Community Participation Grant Program. Funds being about two thousand dollars are requested to purchase the company's corporate project, including a cohere and under equipment.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
The second is for Mount near area rescue group, two thousand dollars. Resolution, Montague County Commission, that on Wednesday, August fourteenth, the former president has to call for resolution. Be resolved if the Montague County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Ellen Callen, President of the County Commission, to act on his behalf by signing the application for the West Virginia Development Office, in order to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the Community Participation Program. Funds being about two thousand dollars are requested to the Mount near area rescue group for technology, operating, and maintenance support type field over the first eight years.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed.
I have a request for a reversal because of July for the new business or five, we have a three thousand eight hundred fifty-else. I have an additional request for reimbursement for the report center for July, around fourteen thousand two twenty-five seventy-one. And a third, as the city governors, I will save the program for DUI grant, July two thousand thirteen, ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight point four.
Move for reversal.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. You charge extra for double duty, Diane. You know, I'll just make that clear. Thank you, Diane. Okay, Mr. Doyle, Bob Doyle.
Well, um, we had a, uh, a piece of property worth our advantage, life-dated housing, and it's a, it's a mold property. And we're here to ask that the fines and stuff be dropped and, uh, lien release off of it. They have cleaned up everything. And we need authorization to release a list pendants, whatever that means.
List pendants. What that means is that there is potential lawsuit or lien pending either against, in the courts or through the county commission uh, to, uh, that would be a, uh, burden on the property to anyone that buys it. So that's a notice to the people. So to release a list pendants is to say that the burden has been lifted.
That's, that's usually what we come and ask, because they have, um, abided by everything now. It's a shame it had to go this far, but a lot of people won't move until it gets in court or the fines. That's what we're here to ask.
Do I have a motion requesting that or not, or discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Uh, let's, we'll delay the executive session till one forty-five until the end, like we've always done to pass.
Okay.
Meet with everyone's approval. There are no objections, I'll move right on. Correspondents, letter from Carrie Blending regarding the appointment of Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission.
This is a letter to the commission. I'm writing this letter to advise the Montague County Commission the appointment to Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission, Frank Vitale, will be expiring at September first, two thousand thirteen. An appointment will need to be made for the next four-year term. If I can be of further assistance, please do not hesitate to phone me. Carrie Blending.
Yes, sir.
I was contacted about this, uh, by Frank Vitale, as well as the sheriff contacting me. And the Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission is presently involved in a hearing. Uh, and there's been some evidence, as I understand it, already presented, and, uh, the process has already started, it's midstream. So what I'd like to suggest for consideration, this would not be, uh, this would not take us away from past practice, but that he remain in that position pending the conclusion of, uh, litigation or mediation, uh, that's going on. And then at that time, we do our regular appointment procedure, advertise the vacancy through our interviews, and then make an appointment or reappointment at the conclusion of, uh, the actions.
A normal procedure.
Yeah.
Unless there's an exception, and I'm not familiar enough, generally, the appointments, as a matter of law, will remain until replaced. But I don't know for sure whether that's true in the Civil Service Commission adoption, because that was a law that I've never really got that involved with. But unless, unless there's any exception to that, uh, I don't think we even need a motion on that effect.
I believe he was our, uh, the county commission's appointment, so it's appropriate that...
We just continue that.
Discontinue it until such time.
No, I think that's, yeah, as long as it's on the record that shows what you're doing, I don't, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. He just continues to serve until the whole thing's done, and then they can let us know. I guess it would, how, how long does this thing, how long do you think this is gonna last, Sheriff?
I actually just got an email today from, uh, my attorneys that said they're trying to schedule what we hope to be the final hearing sometime this month. It looks like it's gonna be towards the end of the month, if all the attorneys involved can get on the same page and, uh, make sure that they have time open on, uh, a specific date. We're looking at the twenty-seventh or twenty-ninth of August, if that works for everybody. And I just got that email, um, probably half an hour ago.
So, so it looks like it might be a couple months.
Yeah. To get everybody... We're hoping, I think they were hoping, the Civil Service Commission and the attorneys that are involved are hoping to, uh, get it done and over with finally this month. As you know, this is, uh, this has been a long...
No one works that fast.
Drawn out process.
They're not gonna get it this time, this month.
We keep our fingers crossed, knock on wood and everything, so...
The, the only reason why I'm asking was, uh, you know, we could go ahead and start advertising. It's not gonna be that long, but if you think it's gonna be more than two or three months, maybe we shouldn't advertise it right away.
Why don't we, we advertise and say that we anticipate the opening in September. Interested applicants can go ahead and apply.
That's a good idea. Let's do it that way, Diane. Thank you, Sheriff. A letter from Mayor Lewis regarding representative of Development Authority.
This is from Mayor Lewis. On behalf of the town of Granville, I respectfully request that Robert England, President of the Town of Granville and member of the Town of Granville's Planning Commission, be allowed to continue to represent the town of Granville as a member of the Montague Development Authority. Mr. England has served on the board for the past two years. He was not relocated to his position as a council member in the election held in June two thousand thirteen. However, he continues to serve at the town of Granville. He's familiar, he's familiar face with the Development Authority and has the knowledge to continue to represent Granville as a member.
Normally, for Tom to benefit out of it, normally, uh, we just, um, uh, endorse whoever the, like, towns recommend.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that position. That he would be the representative of the town of Granville, and if they want him to be, he can continue to be their representative. I would endorse that, and I'd make a motion to reappoint.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Thank you, reappoint. A letter from Brenda Patrick Morgan regarding resignation from River Road PSD.
Um, she's stating that she's regretfully submitting her resignation as a board member from the River Road PSD effective August thirty-one, two thousand thirteen. She's going to be moving to North Carolina and will no longer be eligible. Uh, she did include a couple of applicants names that might be interested in taking the position, so I can schedule interviews for them, if you'd like to officially accept her resignation.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Okay, thank you. Any other correspondence?
Um, I would like to enter into the record the certification of posting that Bob Doyle has posted five locations throughout the area to be considered for minor boundary adjustments. But these have been posted, so I'll turn them over to you.
Okay. Part of the record now. Okay, any, uh, any further correspondence?
No.
Uh, moving on, unfinished business, appointment to board zoning appeals.
John Farmer is interested in continuing, and you had interviewed him at an earlier time.
Right. Yeah, well, they haven't been there that long. I mean, we interviewed him last year, so...
There's still one of them.
How long would his, how long would his term be once it, because we, we put, we appointed them and they got, each got different staggered terms, so he's only been there for about a year or so.
This term would expire January first, two thousand sixteen.
Have a motion on Mr. Farmer?
We don't have any other, right?
There's another applicant, but there's also another vacant position.
Okay. We got one more applicant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Mr. Farmer was reappointed. He needs to get a full term now instead of a partial term. Uh, review of proposals for financing of federal building renovations. Will we stand on that?
Let me share with you some new information that I received.
Okay, great.
And I haven't had a chance to look at it. No, and we haven't had a chance to talk yet.
Right.
So, uh, it is my understanding, and at least so I've been told, that maybe we may be heading down the wrong path on the financing for the renovations. And here's the rationale I was given. The rationale I was given was that, uh, that we don't have the authority to enter into a long-term contract that expends money. And that the loan for the renovations would be a long-term commitment outside of the current budget year. Uh, if that is true, then we have no choice but to go through the building commission and issuance of bonds for the year you finance. Uh, I haven't done any legal research, although I do know, as from the past practice, has been, uh, the only way that this county commission has ever entered into it, and I know that they have on different occasions, is that the contract had an out clause in it each year. And I don't foresee how we can enter into a loan agreement with an out clause every year. Uh, so I, I think we need to really look at that. And it also brings up the, the, uh, the consideration of, of reexamining, should we have an outside counsel to steer this thing through the building commission, if we decide that's the way to go, uh, in the bond, uh, so that we make sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So I share that information with you, and, um, I don't know whether it does any good in terms of the proposals to review them at this point in time, if what I've been told is true and accurate. And I have no reason to believe it's not at this point. Uh, so I share that with, uh, with you all as to disposition here.
Well, it's not true. I, I have, I've heard that, uh, I have heard that it's not true. It was, last year, we talked about this, and we were gonna get an attorney general opinion. And you got to understand, huge amount of money here, so everyone wants to get their one-up on this, the, uh, as to how they can get their hands on that amount of money, uh, for a long period of time. And, and I've had people come in, I, I said, here's, here's the code section. Uh, you know, we talked about sending it to the, uh, uh, state attorney general for attorney general opinion, but there's already been an opinion issued on that. Lewis County, and, and I don't disagree with the fact that, uh, uh, that we, we probably should bring in counsel. I agree with that absolutely. Uh, and actually, I'm basing it on how it was done in Lewis County. Diane and Renetta and I, uh, had enough to need to tour the, did you tour the facility?
No.
I toured the court, it's a beautiful building down there. And even though they worked with counsel, they, they got their own financing, and, and they did it. And I forget what code section is, eight, six, five, or something like that, which allows the county to enter into a new... Uh, the, uh... I, I would, I would say that, uh, what we would do, uh, and what they, and what they did was, they had a bond counsel advising them on, on, on the process and all the finance and everything. But they, they financed it under, uh, that provision. And I, I'm not sure whether it's eight, six, five or not, I don't have it in front of me. Diane, we, we had copies of it last year sometime when we submitted these out. Uh, but, um, and it's not that I have a problem with going through the building commission. It's just that I know that, and I've seen in other government units, that there are symbiotic relationships when you go through a particular commission. And where you scratch my back and I fracture it. Now, I'm not accusing our building commission of that. I'm just saying that what I would like to do is to, uh, follow up with, with your suggestion, which I think is a very good one. Let's bring in a bond counsel. Let's discuss all these things in a work session. Look at the financing, and even, uh, even if we decide to go through the building commission, which might be the best option, uh, say, okay, this is what's out there. So now, when we give you to, give this to you, you don't just go to one or two people. You can get these best rates, because the amount of money, uh, over the life of this loan, we're talking about millions of dollars that the taxpayer would have to pay, that we would otherwise have to pay. So I, I sort of agree with you part of the way. I'm just saying that, that, that there is a codes, the code section, like Lewis County did it, that, uh, that does allow for this kind of long-term capital investment outside of building commission.
Um, I, I stated my opinion before. I'm, I'm uncomfortable, you know, going through these proposals. Um, I feel more comfortable with the two of you, I think we're in agreement. We're gonna need, you know, a ba, a bond counsel to guide us. And my, my logic is, if we're gonna use them, why not just go through the process of, you know, using the, the bond counsel, building the, and reviewing, making a, uh, building commission, and going that direction. I, I did that, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, because that's how we did it in the city of Morgantown. It went very well. I think the bonds right now are very low. It's, it's the direction I am interested in, but, but if, if you wanna look at, I just don't understand why you would have bond counsel, then have another party doing the finance. It, it doesn't make sense.
That, 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 that isn't the way it's done, you don't understand it. That is not the way it's done. Bond counsel works for us.
Right.
What we want to do, and the whole purpose of this bidding, is to ensure that every financing vehicle is analyzed to save the taxpayer's money. You're not going in two different ways. Your bond counsel is one that's going to help you structure this in such a fashion. Uh, you know, it, uh, i- if you just wanna say, okay, let's turn it over to the building commission and forget about it, then they got control. We have no say.
But let's, uh, let me offer a compromise here, uh, see if we can agree on this. Let's take this, uh, baby step at a time. Uh, I think we all agree that we need a counsel.
Yes.
Let's take that step and then confer with our counsel once we get in.
That's fine.
In terms of how we should proceed for that.
That's what I'm gonna do here.
That's fine. So put on a work session, so we can see what, what all our options are.
That's what I, that's what I want.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll make that motion in.
That we bring the bond counsel in.
I'll second, that, that's fine.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In addition to, uh, I, you know, rather than delay who that person would be, you know, we have, and are presently using services upon them, and, and he certainly has expertise in that field. And I would like to make a motion that we, uh, contact him and see if he will serve in that capacity for us.
I'll second that, I think that's a...
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay.
The next thing is, uh...
Keep a guard, Bill.
He's on a roll. He's on a roll.
That's what keep a guard.
Trying to close this issue out.
Yeah.
Uh, I have some mixed feelings. We advertised for proposals, we got them, we haven't really revealed them publicly. Uh, I'm not real sure whether we shouldn't go ahead and just acknowledge the proposals that we got and make it a part of matter of record, and then give those to Tom and let him look at it before he meets with us.
You're right on the same one, because that's what I wanted to do, that's what I was talking about.
Okay, so we don't really need a motion if we agree.
Right.
Diane, can you review this?
And then make it a matter of record, so everyone knows.
Yeah.
So if we did, do go another way, and they charge us ten million dollars more, at least it's...
That's right, that's right.
I think the day that they were received, they were writing here a letter to the directors on which firms were interested.
Oh, did, did we read a rate in or anything like that?
No, they were just a proposal on qualifications and how they could do...
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
The size set, um...
Well, then all we need to do is just say who should...
Yeah.
We'll need a reveal.
And that, just so it's official, part of the record of what they were proposing. Okay, thank you.
The sheriff has a new employee he'd like to introduce, if you could stick him in the...
Okay.
He goes in the record.
Oh, you do, yeah?
Yeah. Greg does in the record for, so we'll look on.
Yes. I would like, while we're, while we're, uh, we're just, we're just gathering that, I would like to say that the County Commissioners Association was, was honored with the esteemed presidents of, uh, of our sheriff as the new president of, uh, Association of Counties. He went back down there, and you would, you would just be surprised how he bragged about us, so...
I appreciate it, Sheriff.
Don't say anything wrong. Just stated facts, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sheriff.
What we have today, very briefly, uh, we wanted to, uh, introduce and get your approval on a new employee, Greg Schreiber, and we'd like to hire him as a part-time process transport officer at a salary of ten fifty-six an hour. Uh, his effective date will be tomorrow, or I'm sorry, today. And probation period would be six months, and of course, because of being a part-time, uh, position, are eligible for benefits.
Have a motion to accept Mr. Schreiber.
Move the appointment of Greg Schreiber.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, welcome aboard, sir. Glad to have you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, these are, these are proposals that will be, uh, available for, uh, public inspection, uh, that were, can give us an idea of what sort of financing mechanisms are out there, and what sort of, uh, opportunity to save taxpayer dollars might be.
This is from Country Roads Leasing LLC, Jeffrey W. Smell. Uh, Piper Jaffray, and they are from Charleston. Where? Argenta Group from Fort Worth, Texas, and a Utah office also.
Have big twelve connection.
Cruise and Associates, Morgantown. And West Banko, local.
Uh, I thought there was a, uh, there was just five?
Yes.
I thought there was a, uh, conglomeration that was going to, of all the banks, that was going to put together, of all the banks in the, in the cities, going to put together... Did you hear anything about that?
No.
And we didn't submit. Okay, someone, someone said, that they were trying to put together...
Now, I think it was mentioned they were trying, yeah.
For the record, we, we really don't have to accept any or...
Just for the record.
Oh, no, we don't have to accept.
Just for the record. All of them re-advertise.
Yeah.
Depending on what our counsel tells us.
That's right. Where we go from there, that's right.
And Glenn Walker, a local CPA, had, um, offered his assistance in looking at this.
Yeah, uh, let me, let me mention this, and I think it'd be a good idea since we're discussing this anyway. Um, he, uh, has done, if, if you, I don't know if you, what have you seen, his, uh, write up. What he has done, and Bobby, you'll be interested in this, is, um, he had his work deal off with the IRS, where, because it's a government, and, um, and I'm, I'm totally up on it, but be, be, because it's a government unit, they, they can act, the contractors can actually qualify for tax deductions. Uh, and by the way, it's set up and all, when you actually do the bidding on the project, they can take in consideration the amount of tax deductions. And you, I wanted to get him in here for a work session and explain it in a little bit more detail, that will actually reduce, will be, they'll be able to reduce their bid in the fact that there will be circumstantial that they can use to take tax deductions. So I thought it was, any way to save taxpayer dollars was worth hooking up to him. I'd like to get Glenn Walker in here for a work session, let him explain it in more detail.
Maybe we can have him come in when Tom comes in, and have him part of that work session. Not, maybe not necessarily all of us, but part of it.
That would be good.
So that Tom could also hear his presentation.
That would be good. That would be good. All we're trying to do here is save every penny we can. If we can save a dollar for the taxpayer, we're gonna find it. Okay, um, request for a bump for a hundred thousand dollars toward Sunshine Estates Sewer Line.
Back in April, Tim Baugh had written to the commission requesting funding for help to put in this sewer line at Sunshine Estates. Project is one point five million dollars. Um, they're asking the commission to provide one hundred thousand of the, that will be matched with a eight hundred thousand dollar grant.
I, you know, I think it's a reasonable request, as I understand it, there's, it will impact, I think, fifty-two, fifty or fifty-two households. Uh, how many?
Fifty customs.
Fifty, so it's right in line with the two thousand dollars per household. Uh, it's also in line with... It's also in line with the funding we set aside for sewer and water. And I know this commission has set that as, uh, one of our priorities, is to get away from the thoroughbred country kinda conditions in Montague County. So I would move that we approve that expenditure for Sunshine Estates.
I'll second.
Have a motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass unanimously. We are, we are trying to get away from the thoroughbred country. And we need to save every penny we can, but, uh, advance, just as we did just now. Appreciate that. Okay. A little unfinished business, new business, resolution for certified development community program.
Usually John Reiki appears, he said he would be available, but I told him it's pretty routine. This is a resolution, um, of participation and cooperation. Do you want me to read it, or do we just want to read it?
Yeah, we should read the resolution.
Okay. Whereas the County Commission of Montague County, the county's governing body, is interested in the economic well-being of its citizens and rate and community at large. Whereas the County Commission of Montague County is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community to become totally prepared to promote economic development. And whereas the West Virginia Development Office offers certified development community and local economic development grant programs that are specifically designed to help West Virginia communities become better prepared for industrial and related economic development. And whereas Montague County was initially awarded CVC status in April nineteen ninety-four, and it has been renewed every three years since then, in nineteen ninety-seven, two thousand, two thousand three, two thousand six, two thousand nine, and two thousand twelve. Therefore, be it resolved by the County Commission of Montague County, where our county wishes to continue its participation in the CVC program, and to participate in the FY two thousand fourteen LEDG program, and that the leadership of this county fully realizes these programs require continued dedicated effort. And be it further resolved that the CVC and LEDG programs require the existence of a local economic development organization, and this governing body designates a Morgantown area economic partnership as representing our community for the purpose of participating in these programs. Adopted today, Eldon Callan, Eldon Lee Bartolo, Tom La.
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Have a motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion pass. That, that reminds me of something that I've never put on the agenda, I'm picking this up each time I'm in the agenda. But in, in the past, the County Commission's representative on the Montague Development Authority was also the representative of the Morgantown Area Economic Partnership. At the time, I agreed to take this appointment because I get up at seven thirty in the morning. Well, I guess you get up at seven thirty, you just can't go at seven.
I'm already at school.
Yeah, you're at school. We, we didn't include that. So I, I just sort of throw that out, whether, whether you think I should, uh, disclose matters of practice, or whether we should have some notice.
I think, I think since you're willing to accept that dual responsibility, I would certainly move that you occur-
And I'll second, 'cause I'm glad I don't have to.
Be granted that opportunity.
Well, it's a lunch meeting.
That's fine. I'm sure you're gonna pay for your own lunch.
Oh, yeah, motion, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass, okay, that makes that official now. Okay. I'm listening, we're, uh, we're gonna talk good things. I, you have that picture, why don't you pass it, Brian? I had, I, we, we got a Diane, uh, Renetta and I were down there and each year, the, uh, auditor's office and the PACS office have a committee. Committee made up of the auditor, the deputy state auditor, the president of the County Commissioners Association, the, the director of the property-
I was gonna put the mustache on you, but you already got it.
You just have to color it in white. It used to be blonde, but now it's white. The director of the property tax division and president of, of one county commissioner is a selection committee that reviews, uh, a annual special achievement warrant for county commissions. The criteria for selection of this is compliance with the laws governing actions and conduct of the county commissions, effective collective leadership exhibited by harmonious relations by members of the county commission, innovation in office procedures, administration, responsible fiscal conduct, cooperation with the various departments of county government, effective communications with federal, state, and city government. I don't know if we got docked on that. No, we might got docked on the Hartman River Bridge on that one. Uh, progressing personnel management policies, and demonstrated achievement in county government. We were given this award, and I had no idea it was going. Diane, she informed me that she submits it every year and, uh, the, uh, but never tells. And she says, uh, he gets up there and he talks about, uh, talks about all the great things this county's known. And then he thought, how could this county be doing such great things? When you got, uh, the three commissioners made up of attorney, owner of a security firm, and guidance counselor. How could they possibly get along? Let alone do great things. And, uh, when they, when they got to the guidance counselor, I says, are there more than two counties like us? Caught me totally off guard. Couldn't finish my dessert, could I? So, um, I would, I, it's my honor and privilege to present to both of you, as well as the staff, uh, this plaque that I hope, uh, probably can find a place to hang in here. Says Thelma J. Stone Memorial Achievement Award presented by Glenn B. Gainer III, West Virginia State Auditor, the Montague County Commission, in recognition of their accomplishments two thousand thirteen. For the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And, uh, I'll pass that around. I, I must say, uh, also that after I, she hit it from us before, but afterwards she allowed me to read her submission. I, I must say that that was an excellent submission, very, very well-written. And you told me you did it in a couple hours, I can't believe that. You must have stood over that for hours and hours. I couldn't write that fast in a couple hours. But it was, it was an excellent presentation, what you did. It speaks highly of all our departments and what we're doing here. We're, we're adopting new procedures, we're changing things, and, uh, it, it creates a lot of turmoil-
Nah.
-when people have, have a certain way of doing things, but, uh, auditor Gainer, Glenn Gainer, told me, uh, that, uh, he said it was, uh, there was really no contest. He said that we, as a county, were head and shoulders above every other county in the state. That, uh, we, if it was a football game, we'd be, uh, he, everyone would've gone home at halftime, that we are so far ahead, and, uh, Laura Ash, uh, said that he never worries about our budgets, he never worries about audits. He knows we're always gonna come out good. I, he, he also, Glenn Gainer also commented about how we, how the three of us could possibly have anything in common and get along. I said, well-
High tolerance.
I said, well, I said, throw in the mix, for half of the year, we had, we had a former extension agent. We seemed to get along for at least half the year. So, uh, I just wanna say, I wanna give my personal thanks to all the elected officials, all the, uh, employees, deputies. We've, we've made changes, I think they're positive changes. I think that everyone has, has welcomed and have really worked together. Because this county commission can't accomplish anything without a good, solid staff. We certainly can't, uh, accomplish anything without the cooperation of all the elected officials. The understanding, although, as Sheriff pointed out, uh, we may have disagreements, but, uh, and Sheriff, you may wanna speak to that, 'cause you made a very good delivery, because being in the, President of the National Association of Counties, uh, he talks to a lot of these groups. And we don't have the problems in this county. And he, and he made that clear, you know, we, we may disagree, but we respect each other's opinions. We don't make it personal, and, uh, we, uh, we just have to sometimes, as Sheriff said, agree to disagree. Sheriff, do you have any comments as the president of Association of Counties?
Actually, I mean, I think you covered it very well, and that's, that's exactly right. I mean, I do talk to a lot of different associations and, uh, even our, the association I belong to with the Sheriff's Association, and being on the executive board there, I hear people complaining all the time about how they can't get along with their commissions, or they're cutting their budgets all the time, or, you know, one thing or another, that it's always, well, the commission is the commission now. And we really honestly don't have that here. And any disagreements we do have, one way or another, they get worked out. Or we just agree that, okay, we're, we're at an impasse, we're not going to agree on everything, and that's okay. If we do, I think we'd be boring, but, uh, but talking to a lot of other counties, uh, and a lot of other county officials, they have some major problems, and they can't get past an impasse. And they can't go on to the next level because they are so focused on only what they want, and they don't see the big picture sometimes. And, and you have to be able to see the big picture, so. I, for one, appreciate the association that, that I have with you all, I know some of the other, if not all, the elected officials feel the same way. And I appreciate the, the cooperation that we have, knowing what some of the other, uh, elected officials in other counties have to deal with.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do you have any comments?
Well, I could echo, uh, everything that you've said, because it's all true, I believe it to be true, but, but one of the things I think we have to do is counter blessings. You know, I, without question, I don't think any county exceeds us in the quality of elected officials we have in this county. I think that all blends together to give Montague County, uh, an image of government operations of, uh, above the standard. And, and I think that that's where all the elected officials stand in this county. And they strive for even more perfection. Now, the one thing that you, you hate to do, but we'll recognize that, you're gonna have dissenters, and we have them, but, uh, they're very few. They distort facts, they distort information to try to make their point. But one thing, uh, usually stands, and the truth prevails in the end. And, and I think, uh, that's happened for Montague County. And the one thing you can overlook is commissioners come and go. Diane's been here for a number of years, Bobby's been here for a number of years, and they're backbone of this county commission. And certainly, uh, I, I think there's a certain kind of honor when people who actually do the actual work recommend you for something. That, that, that takes on a, a different kind of meaning than, than a counterpart or a supervisor recommending someone. And, uh, I thank you for that nomination, and, uh, thank you for everything that you do for us.
Tom?
I, I just wanna thank my colleagues, and, and I'm extremely honored, I tell them every day when I come here. It's a real honor, and I'm excited when I sit behind the desk. This is a really feel-good moment, so for three seconds, I'm at least gonna take three seconds to feel good about this. Because we are in a lot of issues that are difficult, we're trying to make some changes. But I think the big, the big picture, and that's what we're looking at right now, and it's hard sometimes, is that the state realizes what we're trying to do. We couldn't do this without, as you said, the elected officials, you know, and we have, you know, Mark, Kelly, Carrie, and also the employees, and I think there's a, there's a different attitude. And I see it, I think it's a working relationship, that they wanna do things for this county, they wanna do things because they live here, and I think we're gonna continue to do it, and this is our feel-good moment, so I, I'm very excited. Enjoy it, because in about five minutes, we'll probably be onto another issue, so, but thank you very much. And, and again, Diane, thank you for putting this all together.
Thank you. Uh, we'll, we'll move to the other elected official, but first, let's see if this county can talk before.
Uh, one thing, uh, I talked with Bobby about Hartman River Bridge. And what he did is he had, uh, one of his people go out and paint a section of the bridge rail with Rust-Oleum, a green paint. So he called me the other day, and he said, go out and look at that and see what you think. So I drove out, and, uh, it's just a little small section, but if you can be creative and sort of imagine the whole bridge looking like that, I can't believe what a significant difference it'll make in that appearance. And, uh, you know, and I, and I, and I think we need to do that. And I think just because that bridge is under some controversy at this point, which, by the way, it looks like it has a bright future for the state, I don't think we should let the appearance go downhill. And I, I think what Bobby and his crew can do out there, uh, I think not only will, will be a plus for the community, but certainly the people that live in that area, uh, will appreciate the change in, in the cosmetics and-
Yeah. I, I think it was excellent, uh, just removing the weeds and the brush.
You'll be pleased with the paint.
That's a good idea. I think that's a good idea. Tom, do you have any?
Yeah, a couple court things. Uh, I think one of the things, this is a perfect example of what, uh, is a working relationship. Last week, we had asked, Bill and I, the possibility of looking into a fitness program or wellness program for the employees. Already Diane sent out a letter asking for information requests, and I think that's the kind of thing, it's one thing to talk about it, action speaks louder than words, and we're working together, so I'm glad we're looking at what options we can consider along that line, and I wanna thank you for doing that.
Actually, I've got about twenty-
Oh, really? Already? And I've already received several phone calls from businesses that are interested in working out some sort of program, so maybe what we might wanna do is maybe get a committee together down the road, you know, of employees representing different areas, to see what areas of interest there are, and see, you know, what we might come up with. I think, I think it's a, I think in the long run, it'll really cut the cost of the medical benefits, and at the same time, gives a benefit to the, to the employees. Sheriff, have you heard anything at all about? We have been going on with one nineteen and seventy-three, and Sheriff is starting to get the frustration that I'm also been feeling for, for twelve years. How, are they going to paint the road and make signs, and what have you heard, at one nineteen and seventy-three?
Actually, I'm glad you asked, 'cause I was gonna tell you in my report. I talked to Fred Short,
Okay.
who is the, uh, in the engineering department at the Department of Highways. And he and Larry Weaver, who is the local supervisor for the Department of Highways, went up, looked at it again, I asked about the sign to put up-
Right.
you know, stay in this lane if you're going straight and all that stuff. Fred said he would look at the possibility of putting up a sign, but what they are definitely gonna do is redo the markings on the road.
Great.
The turn, uh, signs and everything. And the cowl sticks that they had in the dividing area, they're gonna replace those as well. So, uh, he did tell me, and this is the first time I've had anybody admit this, but he did tell me there are some structural issues with the way that that road was constructed from the beginning. And they've recognized what they are, they realize that there are some things that need to be changed about it, contours of the road and everything.
Okay.
But he said, right now, as, as we talk today, he said, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but as we talk today, we don't have the amount of money that's gonna take in our budget to do the changes that need to be done. We recognize that they need to be done, and at some point, they will be done.
Okay.
But we just can't start on it next week. But he said, what we can do is take care of those things as far as the road markings-
Great.
-and things, so it will make it a lot more clear for motorists, what ways they can turn and can't turn, and lanes that they should be in when they're coming downhill.
And I appreciate that, with the students going back to school, high school students, and also the students coming in, I think that's something that, you know, we really need. Along that lines also, I've been asked, and I don't know what you can do, but there's become a real serious problem, as you know, with the trucks going on Route seventy-three. Overloading because they're not able to go on the bridges, because they're able to put more weight on seventy-three, and, you know, the road is starting to collapse, but worse than that, they're starting and, and going on the other side of the road because of the potholes. So what we have had in the last week was four near accidents where cars have gone in ditches and- So, what we have had in the last week was four near accidents where cars have gone in ditches and had minor damage. And I don't know what you can do and I know we've sent letters. It's just a concern and I'm sure there's other roads like Route 73 that are being used as shortcuts. And we're just really concerned. I know when you've been out there, you know, they radio and, you know, you get the first truck and that's the last one you get. But again, I just, I said to them, "I would pass on to you." Again, just the concern out at Route 73 with the school buses starting up again and the trucks going between, especially six and seven in the morning. There's thirty or forty trucks that do not understand that the roadway is for two cars.
We have done a lot of traffic enforcement out there.
Yes, we know, we've seen you.
Speed enforcement and have been out there quite a, quite a bit.
Yeah.
In the last three weeks or so. Uh, one of the things that we can do, I can get in touch with the Department of Transportation, see if they would be willing to, uh, send their enforcement folks out there.
Okay.
And maybe have a, a couple of days a week or one day a week whenever the truck traffic is the heaviest and have the portable scales, do some weighing of some vehicles that they feel might be overweight. And then have the Department of Highways take a look at the weight limit on that road and see if it needs to be.
That, that would be fair. Anything along those lines would, would be really helpful because we're really concerned. There's been a lot of development out there and a lot more cars are going out there. And I think that's what the problem is. There's a lot of growth and we're not catching up, of course, in the long run, the roadway and that's why that blue ribbon pattern. And I know they're looking at some of the major roads, but those, that's roads that now, there must be ten new developments with about two hundred new houses. And we're, we're just not prepared for that. But I thank, I appreciate everything that you do and we just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Uh, you mentioned that intersection, can't help but tell you. The store on my way to Lewis County coming up there. And someone pulled up there and tried to take a right. And so they slowed down, so the person sitting there pulled right out in front of me. And I was coming up the hill. I barely missed him. I had to swirl around. I mean, I don't know why. I don't, I don't, it's a bad intersection. They almost got me, you know. But, uh, anyway, I, maybe Lewis, Lewis County and, uh, Renetta and Diane and I, we've learned a lot. I mean, there's a lot of information and, uh, a lot of things that we'll talk about, about in the, in the future. Um, because there's al, there's always things, if you will say, there's always things. I mean, everything from auditing and budgeting to, uh, well, building buildings, how to finance buildings, there were whole presentation on that and different ways to finance it and different ways to build it. And, uh, there, there was, uh, things on communications and working with other departments. There, there's all kinds of things that we'll go, we'll work with in a work session. I'll, I'll share with you at later point. Uh, so I, I, I found it was very helpful. It was al, also nice to have two lovely ladies down there with you too that they, they travel with me.
Is this a confession?
Instead of two lovely men.
Paying a compliment. Boy, I gotta wash my mouth. I was at senior center meeting yesterday.
This sounded, sounded sort of like a brag.
I was bragging. I had two lovely ladies that actually sat there and ate with me. That's unusual, except for my wife was with me. But she was there too, so I actually had three lovely ladies.
Oh, boy, now you're in real trouble. You're in real trouble now. Can you blank the tape?
I gotta, I gotta, I gotta wash my mouth.
Yeah, you got, Ben's got it.
I was at the senior center yesterday at, at a meeting and we, uh, and I don't care, people know. I, I, I had nothing to hide in this world, nothing. I really don't. Uh, that, uh, I couldn't help it. We were talking about that thermostat up there. You know, going on about that thermostat. So, uh, I passed on your offer again that if we need to replace it, we'll come up and replace it. And they want to know if they had to pay for it. I said, "Well, everyone has to pay." And, "Well, we have, we have to pay for it." I said, "Well, everyone has to pay." And she said, "What are you taking it out and trade?" And I was like, "Oh goodness, what in the world? I opened my mouth again." And I said, and I said, I said, "No, um, you missed the point. That what the county pays for something, that is not our money. It's the people out there. It's the taxpayers. It's all you people in the senior center. Everyone that pay, anytime we do something, every, any penny we spend, it's your money that we spend." And I, and I try to emphasize that. And, uh, but that backfired on me too. I mean, she, she went off a different path. Uh, when I got back, I, I, I was going to spend a little bit of time, but my wife had an emergency and she had to come back for a film. I went ahead and made it to the Blue Ribbon Commission. I did carry your message.
You did. They didn't print it in the paper.
Uh, there, there was, uh, well, that was because the four other people that spoken for, I spoke, had the same message. They did print those messages. Said, "We're not pa, we're not paying more taxes." You know, that was printed in the paper, so they didn't want to repeat me. Also talked about the significance of roads in counties. And that you can't run everything from Charleston. And this is an important, and this is an important fact that people need to realize. Out of fifty-five counties, eleven counties have less than ten thousand people in population. Out of four, out of fifty-five counties, forty-four counties have less than fifty thousand people in population and the majority of those are thirty-five thousand or less. There are only three counties with over a hundred thousand in population. Canala, Berkeley, and Mongeay. Mongeay County is the fastest growing county, most likely in the country, they're estimating in the country. We have gained in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, we averaged an increased population of four thousand per year. And that growth is going to continue to, that's expected to grow. Probably, uh, outpaced Berham County. And, uh, the, of those, uh, after those three, of those with less than a hundred thousand, more than fifty thousand, most of them are in the eighty thousand range. Capital is the only one that's close to a hundred thousand, which is ninety, ninety-five thousand. So, what my message on top of our message, don't send us more bills for more taxes because you're not flying here, uh, is that you've got to give us a toolbox. You've got to give us a way that we can work with. If you want us involved in roads, you've got to give us a way that we can work with the local DOH. We can help solve these problems. But don't send us a bill, a bill in terms of a bill that you have to pay. Uh, and then don't give us any say on fixing things, just like you were talking about. How long, how many years? I first became a commissioner and you were.
Thirteen years.
Well, so a lot, a lot longer than I even knew about it. And so, uh, that was the message on top of the, the no taxes message. That we've got to, we've got to deal with roads and, uh, but it can't be done out of Charleston. It's got to be a partnership and we've got to work together. And if they think they're just going to send us a bill and think that, well, I could speak, well, probably two to you, you and I, no, because we both said, uh, that, that we're not, we're not going to approve it. We're, we're not going to be raising people's taxes and have no accountability for the way the money's spent. We're just not going to do it. I think Tom's going to agree with that too, but I had discussed it with him before. Uh, so that's, uh, that, that was the Blue Ribbon Commission. Uh, hopefully they'll take it to heart. And it goes back to, to so many things, whether it's waterworks, sewer, whatever. You cannot run, you can't write a law in Charleston that's going to apply to such diverse counties and make it apply and make it work. So, that, that, that was the emphasis of, of my assertion and has been for the last couple of years with the legislature. When I go down the legislature, she got to give us a toolbox. Bicycle, I need a wrench, I may need some channel locks, a screwdriver or two. That's in my toolbox. If I'm flying a jet, fixing a jet engine, I'm going to need a whole lot more. I still need the basic toolbox, but I need this too. So, you can't cut this out and this out and this and, and design and have it work. So, that, that's my message. I hope they, I hope they take it to heart and, and listen because the, the roads are just getting worse and worse and worse. And I know they're having money problems, but the last thing I said to them, the real problem is the system is broken. It's broken. There's a disconnect. You call the DOH and say, "I've got a road, I, I got potholes." Or, "I got this," or, "I got that." Nine times out of ten, different part, where you depend, live in the county, the answer is, "Oh, that's an orphan road. We don't fix it." "Oh, that's not in the state highway system. We don't fix it." Well, the county doesn't fix it. So, who fixes it? So, there's a disconnect and the system's broken and it needs to be fixed. I wanted to, I wanted to mention one other thing and, and I don't know. Um, I saw this thing in a paper, uh, that they had an emergency meeting and the health department, the county commissioners were invited.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I never saw any invite. I never got any invite.
It was with MUB, I believe, and.
No, it was the health department.
Flooding, uh, the flooding. Water problem. I think there's an article in the paper today about that.
But it was at the health department with MUB and the health department.
Yeah, it was an emergency core meeting. It was a meeting to get MUB and the health department together. Mike Paul was at another event and I wasn't here yesterday, but I was aware of it.
Okay, but I, they, they, it was printed in the paper that commissioners were invited and no commissioner showed up. I never knew anything about it.
I did. I gave you an email.
I, my email hadn't worked.
We, we did have a person come from that area and present it to us.
Oh, yeah.
There was some reason though that, uh, I thought it wa.
But we referred him to the health department.
I, for some reason, I kept thinking that it was actually more in the city of Morgantown than it was the county, but I'm not positive. There was some reason why we really couldn't take any action.
The development, I thought, was in the city, but the water ran down into.
Into the county. That was it. But he was supposed to come back for a work session. But the point I was trying to make, I, I mean, I don't know. I didn't get any invite. If they say they invited the commissioner, they didn't invite me. I, I get calls from, started five after eight in the morning, so they got my phone number. So, I just don't appreciate that, that the insinuation.
Rich Wood, Rich Wood was there, was there.
Yeah, no, he was there representing, but I just didn't appreciate the insinuation that, that we weren't interested when, quite frankly, we made this call. We were interested.
Yeah.
Setting up for a work session to come back, he didn't come back. So, that's all I am. Uh, Sheriff, you have anything further?
You'd probably kill me, but yes, I did. I know it's unusual. After you, ma'am.
I'm going right here.
Okay. Um, Bobby and I talked a week or so ago and about, uh, the purchase of some new vehicles. I know that the commission had allocated funds to purchase two new, uh, police vehicles. And, uh, we had looked at the state bid, uh, possibilities they had. And I know in the past several years, we've gotten four-wheel drives most of the time. And now we're basically in need of just standard police interceptor, uh, vehicles, just regular sedans. So, we looked at the price and we looked at what they offered. Uh, the reason we didn't go with these last year, we wanted to at least give a year of these particular vehicles being in service to see if they had any major issues with them, mechanical problems or anything. We found out they don't. So, what we'd like to purchase, the, the money that's set aside by the commission, are two, uh, two thousand thirteen Ford Taurus, all-wheel drive, uh, police cars. And along with that, um, as you know, since the concealed weapons money that we've been taking in has been, uh, a good amount, uh, over the last couple of years. So, what I'd be willing to do again, uh, as in cooperation like we did before with the commission, I'd be willing to spend money out of that concealed weapons, uh, account to buy an additional two vehicles, uh, that would give us a total of four, so we wouldn't ask the commission to buy all four of those, even though we need them. So, uh, I'm willing to do that. All we need is, uh, your all's blessing to go ahead with the purchase and we can go ahead and develop a purchase order for the two out of the general county fund. And then we'll have the tax office, uh, do a check out of the concealed weapons fund.
Okay, you need a motion to pass?
Yeah, I'll move that, uh, move for approval.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll steam ahead, Sheriff. Thank you. Probably about fifteen, twenty minutes. Um, that can wait. Uh, the, um, Madam Clerk. Carrie?
Yes, I have two, two things, actually. I have made arrangements with, uh, Mountaineer Mall again for an election center, uh, for two thousand fourteen. I know we thought we were out of the election business, but it's right back on us again. So, they have, um, developed a lease, a same lease as we've signed with them before for January one through December thirty-one of two thousand fourteen. So, I have those leases if you want to put it on a work session or, uh, I just need a, a motion from the commission to, for you all to sign these leases for the Mountaineer Mall.
Do you want to review the work session before?
Not, but if it's exactly the same thing.
Yeah, it's four dollars, it's four dollars a square foot. It's for the old, um, Goodwill unit.
Oh, okay.
It's the only thing that they have available for us now, but they are willing to, um, to give it to us for the calendar year of two thousand.
If it's the exact same lease, then I would just move that we just approve.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we can leave it up to you, Carrie.
Yeah.
And I'll second.
A motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
And the other thing, uh, you made the motion to bring Tom Amon on board for, um, the.
Rehearing fire.
Renovations on the, on the, um.
Yes.
Federal building. Uh, I have made arrangements to, uh, you start using the purchasing card again, um, mainly for these renovations at the federal building because we can get a rebate back on whatever monies we spend. So, I just will reiterate that whatever bids go out for those renovations, it needs to be in there. Um, that they have to be, are, they have to be willing to use the purchasing card so that we can pay. But we'll get a rebate back then on whatever we spend.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, your assessor?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Uh, any other elected officials? Kelly, you, they, you, you had a hand in helping us win this award, so you have any comments?
Not, no, thank you.
Everyone, just keep up the good work. We're proud of everybody. Uh. I'm blanking.
Jan?
No, no. Granville. Ron, Ron Snyder. I'm blank, I'm sorry. Okay, any other elected officials? Uh, Diane, you have anything further?
No.
Bobby?
Not this time.
You have me?
Yes, I do. Brought Brenda Davidson from McMuffin today. And she has a, uh, an invoice for you guys to talk about.
Can you turn that microphone, Sergeant?
Yeah, might move the microphone over. Um, this is an invoice that we have for the chairs that were purchased for the new dining hall and the old dining hall, which is now the assembly hall, and the downstairs, one of the classrooms downstairs. Um, these chairs were purchased, um, well, the order went in way before the new change now. Um, this was back before April. Um, the chairs were delivered, um, on here, the, the end of April, basically, the chairs were delivered. I had some issues with the chairs. Um, first of all, let's go back for a minute and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not really sure how I need to present this to you because they suggested I come because I needed to take this to my new bosses, okay? And that you were here to help me, so that's really why I'm here, okay?
The good-fil moment is gone.
A lot of, a lot of this is a little confusing, so I'm here, you know, Bobby actually and Janby both suggested I come, so that's why I'm here. And, and, um, I have this outstanding invoice. Um, you know, this was a decision that the board had, had done. Um, once again, way before any of this took place.
Yeah. Just tell, just tell us what's, what's going on, what do you think?
I need some help paying this. Um, I would have, if had we got our county money check, um, in July, then I would have been able to have paid this. But however, we were used to getting payments quarterly, January, you know what I mean, April.
Each quarter.
Each, and now things are different. Things are different, you know, and the last couple of years kind of changed. And, you know, they were used to this also. Um, I even pulled some back records showing how we used to get it basically every quarter. Um, and now the quarters are, are different for, you know, whatever reason. Originally, when this order. Originally, when this order went in. There was a donation made. Okay, and Ruth Potter, you remember the dedication that was made to the one classroom? Okay, well, there was a donation made, and actually, these chairs would have been paid by part of that donation. But because of the funding being different now, and the checks being, like, for instance, this past year, I had only one check. I even pulled the report, I have only had, I had one check from the county. So anyways, what I'm trying to do is get this invoice paid. This was something, you know, that was done before our change. I'm not sure, you know, if you would like to look at the invoice. I actually, as long as we would get the September payment, you know, we will be fine to cover this.
Well, what you're trying to explain to me, if I understand, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. Basically, the board was spending money before they got it. They were betting, they were betting on the come. They, we'll spend this money now, because we're going to get this money in the future. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. I, I mean, I'm saying that the, these chairs were purchased, you know, by a board, board.
Without money, without any money to pay for.
Where did they think the money, do you have any idea?
From the donation that we got, that's why it was purchased. We needed the tables and chairs.
But they didn't have the money.
Well, we did have the money at the time. I didn't, they had the money at the time. They had the money at the time. But whenever, you know, of course, I have a lot more expenses, my camp season rolled in. They were going to use the donation that they had received from Ruth Potter. But because of other expenses, that donation got used towards other things.
And how much was that donation?
Fifty-two thousand.
And they, and they, so, so I, I'm right when I'm saying they bought something, they didn't have the money to pay for, because they spent it on something else. I mean, how else can you cut it? Can't cut it any other way. Let's be honest here. That's, that's the strength of this commission. We're honest and straightforward.
I think with the, I, I'm, I, I just want, I would like to get this invoice taken care of, because it worries me. And, you know, now things are different, and I don't know who to go to, so.
Well, you, you came to the right place. I mean, it's, we're all, and, and I'm not talking about you, I, I'm just trying to explain. That the, the, the reality of the way things ha- have been happening in this county. Has created problems like this over and over again, and it always been shuttled and hid under the, the desk. I saw it when I first came here as commissioner, I'm sure. Commissioner Bartoli saw it when he first came, came here. And it's just, that, that people have a right to know what's going on.
Okay.
And.
And how much are those chairs?
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thirty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-four. Okay, I guess my question is, and again, did the board not realize there were encum-? What you're, what he's trying to say is there's encumbered expenses between, for the next several months. Did the board just. Not understand where that money was going to come from? Again, I know you can't.
It's going to be hard for her to explain what the board was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, okay, let's try it this way. I'm still confused about. What is it that was so drastic that it's changed in the last several months, that you're saying that it, the money isn't coming from the county?
Normally, we would have gotten a July check.
Of what?
And that's the way they looked at it, of county money.
They spent money ahead. They spent it before, before the.
And how much would you have gotten?
Well, we have donations, so when that, when that went into effect, but there again, we had some major, you know, to me, I believe, I had some changes. I had a lot of things that were different because of the new dining hall that we had to have. You know, I had a bigger fuel bill that I wasn't used to having. You know, that once you get that, then that has to be taken care of. So there are things that did change, okay, that the, the board probably wasn't going to be aware of. But I had to take care of them, so. You know, the point is, there's a change now. You guys are my, this is all kind of like, I know, in, in the midst of changing, and. I just want to take care of this.
Well, I understand, and, and you should, you shouldn't feel the least bit nervous, because we're not, we're not talking about you at all. You're doing a good job, you have been. This concerns me, that, that, these chairs are eighty dollars apiece?
Sixty, about sixty-five is what I figured.
Well, four hundred and two sixty-one. Am I multiplying wrong? Sixty-nine, about sixty-nine. About sixty-nine dollars apiece. Sixty-nine dollars apiece. What kind of chairs are these? Gold or something?
They're lifetime warranties, one, oh, well.
There was a few problems, I want to make it clear too. There were a few problems with this, and that's why, you know, after July, then I started, you know, looking at this, and. And in fact, the woman from this company did not get back to me until July. And these are things that I've already discussed with Bobby and Janby are aware of it. We had some problems with some protectors that were purchased for the bottom of these chairs.
Yeah, I understand that the, the.
So we really didn't want to do anything at first, until we had some things taken.
Was there any way to return these chairs? I mean, sixty-seven dollars, sixty-nine dollars for a chair, that's outrageous.
Well, are we using the chairs now? So, okay, so they can't be returned. I guess, Janby, I might throw it up to you a little bit. Is there. More that can be added to this situation, so you can explain a little bit, because I. Of, I, I'm still a little confused about the July. How much money would you have gotten in July from us? Would you have gotten all our money?
No, we would have just gotten, hang on.
Are you talking about the last quarter of last year? So you, you should have gotten the end of June.
Yeah.
And how much were that?
We would have gotten all of four quarters last year, on June thirty.
Right, the way, the way it is, it just changed, it just changed, and I think that's where they got confused, and, and I'm not trying to stick up for anybody, but they, I'm just. That I'm honestly being honest to myself.
Be honest, that's all we have.
Come up with, because I can understand how this got messed up. If you look, okay, what, what, what am I giving you there? Okay, this is.
Cash based. Checking account.
Yeah. Okay, if you look at that one, okay, that, that was from last year.
Mm-hmm.
They, they're just different. Like, they're not, and like, there were two payments, see.
Second payment, forty-five thousand, the budget digest was a, so it was forty-five thousand dollars.
Do you see how they're cut off now? Then this one. Hold that last.
If we hold the last payment to pay for the dining hall.
Right.
Well, that was agreed to. I mean, that was agreed to by the board, so they knew the money wasn't coming in.
The, let me just interject something.
Okay, regardless.
Now, it used to be, one, two, three, on orders.
Yeah.
It's, it's changed now, like September.
Please don't take this comment personally, but. The, the fact of the matter is that this isn't the first instance. Of where there wasn't money to pay for something. At that camp. You know, from a financial standpoint, and, and having been a businessman for a number of years. You don't, you don't start projects that you don't have the money to finish, and you don't make purchases unless you're sure you have the money. Now, if there's a mix-up in terms of. What money you're going to get in the future, then you don't make that purchase until you decide and have it confirmed what you're going to get in the future. That's sound financial management. Unfortunately, this is a second instance that's, that sort of supports the fact that. That's one of the problems that we've had with Camp Muffin. There's been a lack of sound financial management, because this is a second occurrence now, where the commission is going to have to look at. Paying for these chairs, and should we pay for these chairs? Now, I, I think the point that you made is a valid point. You know, these chairs were purchased back in April. There was a different setup. That's not your fault. At that time, this board thought they were the managing board, and they acted accordingly, just the way they have in years past. So that's on them, not you, by no means. But then it comes back to us. You know, the obligation, do we have an obligation to pay this? And I know you'd like to get it settled, but thirty-seven thousand dollars, if we pay for it, is taxpayer dollars. So that means we're going to spend thirty-seven thousand dollars of taxpayers' money on chairs that a board bought. Who don't have the money to pay for it. And. That's a, that's a real valid question, is whether or not we should say, send the chairs back. We're not paying for them. Or whether we would say, well, we have an obligation to go ahead and pay for those chairs. But anymore from this point on. You can just tell them we're not paying for anything. In fact, they don't have the authorization to purchase anything from this point on, and obligate any county tax fakes.
Right, no, no, Bobby's made it very clear, Janby's made it very clear, that nothing, I mean, as far as, I'm very well aware that if, even if there's.
But I think that's the question we, the question we have here is, are we going to pay for these chairs?
Well, one question. One question. If you, you showed us that the payment quarterly was, like, say, forty-one thousand dollars. So basically, if we would give you that forty-one thousand dollar payment, you have five thousand dollars to run the camp for the next four months?
No, I have, no, I'm not.
That's why I don't understand.
I just don't, as of right now, have the money to take care of that.
How much money do you have?
Right now, it's right around thirty, you know, and, and, and then I have other things coming in, and I can probably take care of that, but then I'm not going to have any.
All right, let, let's, let's clarify this.
Yeah.
For, for everyone's edification. The. Hall, the dining hall could not be finished. It would never be finished. They were saying that it was going to have to be torn down. County went in, we made a deal on that count, that, that, on that dining hall. And the money was to be reimbursed. So when, so it's not, it's not totally accurate to say that. We can't pay for these chairs because we didn't get forty-one thousand. The board knew they wasn't getting the forty-one thousand, because they were repaying us for the dining hall. That is the real issue. The secondary issue, and I learned this down at the County Commissioners Association. We are responsible. I didn't know this. As, where, as a county commission. When we give money even to a five oh one C three. If we give money to a nonprofit organization, in this case, it's our, our, our own camp. But even if we give money to a nonprofit organization, we are liable. For that money being spent in accordance with all the laws. That we are, are under, which means, brings me to my next question. Were these chairs bid, as the statute requires them to be bid? We're not liable. This expenditure was totally illegal, according to what I just learned at the County Commissioners Association. They have got, if they're spending this kind of money, they have got to bid it. Just like we as a government agency has to bid it. This was an illegal purchase, in my, in my opinion.
So what are, what are our options? If we, okay.
Now, in my opinion, it's an illegal purchase. I'm not paying for it. You go, you decide what you're going to do.
Well.
Send them back.
We're already using them, right? So there's no way we can send them back, correct?
I've been using them since the first week of June.
Okay. I'd like to send them back, but that's not realistic.
I'm not paying for it. It's an illegal purchase. I'm not authorized it. You go ahead and authorize it if you want to. What?
I think there were some tables purchased also.
Tables were purchased also, I think.
I don't know the prices.
Well, I didn't, I, I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't know at that time. If I authorized it, then I changed.
Okay, what happens if we would have put, okay, you said you have thirty thousand now. Say if we would have put in twenty thousand to take as an advancement and pay. You know, from, can we do that? Is that an option?
Well, I think the way we handle other agencies, especially fire departments, for instance, we give them twenty thousand, but they submit bills that have been approved, and then we reimburse, or they send the bill in, we pay it directly.
Right.
I think now that we're changing this, and we're paying sali out of this line item for her, that they should send the bills in here, and then we pay them directly. That way, we know what we're spending.
Okay, well, that.
And we also know that they are legal charges in accordance with the laws that we must operate on when we spend that third dollar.
Instead of giving them their three-quarters and letting them pay their bills, we should be paying their bills.
Which is, which I think is a great idea from now on out. What do we want to do about this?
One of.
I mean.
Commissioner Callen, Commissioner Callen makes a very valid point here. It's, it's not a question here of what we want to do, it's a question here of what we're obligated to do. And if in fact, this is an illegal purchase, we have no choice but not to pay it. The only thing that, the only thing that I don't want to do is to put you on the spot. If, if we take that position, then I would like for us to send a letter to the manufacturer with copies to the. The so-called little board.
Right, the little board.
Of what our position is, so that it removes Brenda from, from a go-between.
I, I would, I would feel more comfortable too, since I have not researched it independently. I'm just going based on what. I was just taught, County Commissioners Association, that we ask Filmer who's waiting on it as well.
Let's get a legal opinion, yeah.
I'd like to get his opinion.
Well, when is this bill due by?
It's not due at all if it's illegal.
Well, whether it's illegal or not, it's still.
But, you know. Back whenever we were having the dispute about the floor and all of that, you know, I didn't want to be involved in this either. You know, now this is, the board's no longer, you know, in charge of this, I'm in charge of this. So since I'm in charge of this now.
Right.
Of course, I want to get this taken care of, and, and, you know, I don't want, I don't want, um. I don't want anything, I mean, my goodness, it's, I don't expect anything, but at the same time, I feel it would be very embarrassing.
If we don't.
Well, it's not embarrassing to you. I mean, the reality, it's sixty-five dollars a chair. I know. People, taxpayers, pay, that can't afford a sixty-five dollar chair in their house. And we're putting a sixty-five dollar chair in a dining hall? That's nuts.
Most places have folding chairs.
No, no, that's not.
Metal folding chairs, and there's a reason for that.
But on top of, but on top of that, the reality is, and, and my position, I think Bill's stuck in the same position. If that's illegal, we can't pay for it.
The, the reality is they didn't bid. That, that's, that's our problem. But we have the items, so now we have to decide. What, I'd like to know what our options are. Okay, and I, and I agree with you, so if you go, you see, give, if, you know, if, you know, the attorney wants to, Magr wants to say what our options are.
That's what I want, that's what I want.
Let's do that.
Before I.
Yeah, and that way.
I don't know what my options are.
I'm not trying to back anybody up, and I just, because I'm just trying to do my job, but I do know this, that it was made aware. That for any project over ten thousand dollars, that I know I was told back when Acele was still here, that I needed to have her, Bobby, you know, do a bid, but that was contract. Contractor, not purchasing.
Well.
Well, applies to purchasing.
Okay.
Okay, yes, I just want to, I mean, I.
And, and it has nothing to do with your performance, your work, and I know you're trying to do the job. That, that, this just emphasizes why taxpayers' money has been thrown around, and then for five thousand dollars. Someone thinks, because I give a five thousand dollar donation, they own the Camp Muffin. Baloney. I'm not selling Camp Muffin for five thousand dollar donation. That's ridiculous.
Could you put this on our agenda next week with the letter, and then we can make a decision of what our options are? How's that sound?
Now, did you understand when I said that we would pay their bills, that means that we're not sending them a quarterly check?
Right.
Right, no.
Right, we need to send a letter, explain that to them.
We, we need to, we need to bring a stop to this rampant. What I consider illegal spending of taxpayer money. We just got to stop it. That, that's, I, I think we got to stop it.
Thank you, sure.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Oh, yes. Janby, you got something?
Are you gonna, are you gonna take a look at the tables, how they were purchased also, if they were over ten thousand dollars and not bid?
Well, they have to be bid if they're over ten thousand. They, they, that's one thing that, that I wasn't fully aware, but just because we give an organization money. Does not eliminate our responsibility to ensure the taxpayers' money is spent legally. What's that?
Right, but I still would like to find that, yeah. I think it's accountability, you know, because if someone makes a complaint, they could say, we did this, and we've set a precedent, and we want to get this clear. Okay.
Right, yeah. Okay, we know what we're going to do there. Comments from the public? Okay, we're going to try to limit about, we're way, way, way behind schedule. We're going to try to limit it to about two minutes, so what you have to say, Lou?
How many?
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yeah.
Anyway, I brought some pictures, because last time I spoke, I had a little trouble explaining what the situation was. So I'm going to pass out these. So I'm gonna pass out these pictures to show you what took place. Those first. I, I have four copies.
Oh, okay.
That top picture was in July of two thousand and three. I know that's ancient history, but that situation still exists. And that's why I say MUB can't take care of Scott's Run because they can't take care of what they have. They resp- they're responsible for that sewer. In two thousand and three in July, the stormwater and sewage busted that sewer right there. This sewer was right down through Creps Park where the kids play around. And it goes all the way to the treatment plant. And it busted out before July twenty-fourth. This picture was taken July twenty-fourth. I had a camera that showed the dates on it, on the picture. This happened July the twenty-fourth. On July the twenty, or the eighth month, August, the sixth, they put plywood on it, two sheets of plywood. The next time it rained, guess what? Somebody downstream got some plywood. Now, if you turn it over, you'll see a picture that was taken in October the first that shows that open. And it remained, it was open all this time. If, if a kid would come down off of the boulevard, down over the hill and fall in that sewer line, he'd end up at the treatment plant, like the slicky slide that, that they have at the swimming pools. A deer or anything that would fall in there would end up down at the treatment plant. That's in October first. Remember, it happened in July. October the tenth, it's wide open. October the eighteenth, from July to October, they finally covered it with metal. And later, not, not that same day, but later, they put concrete on it. But the only problem is
All right, we thank you, uh, Ruth.
They patch it and I'm sure it's busted out since then.
Not to, not to interrupt, uh, the gentleman, but I think it's appropriate, what we can do is bring this to the attention of MUB, which is the only thing we can do. Uh, and, and I think, uh, if that's what we do, then we'll just have to see the kind of response that comes from MUB. But there, there's nothing else we can do in view of this situation. If it's MUB's responsibility, the, if it's not, they'll tell us. If it is, then I'm sure that they'll, they'll, they'll address in terms of
Yeah.
what they can do about it, if anything.
Well, what they told
But there's no sense in keep beating this without doing something about it.
Well, let me explain what they told me when this happened. They, I asked them to repair, I mean, to rebuild it, to put a new sewer in it like they did in Morgantown. They replaced it in, in the city limits, but when it got to the edge of the city limits, they put it back in the old sewer. In the city limits, they replaced it with terracotta towel, huge place. So, and it's covered. So when it, when it pressures high there, it doesn't come out.
Well, that's why I say we need to make sure we bring it to MUB's attention and see what they do.
We'll get some clarification.
That's the only thing we can do.
Well, I came before, County Commission before, nothing happened anyway.
Well
Anyway, I
Okay.
Thank you, uh, thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're in recess for nine minutes. Yes.
He takes his attention.
Yeah.
Uh, that's what I said, we're in recess. We're in recess for uh nine minutes. We're back here at two forty-five and uh in executive session. Everyone has a charge.